I'd like to call to order the Chair Township of Oxford Board Trustees regular meeting. Today is Wednesday, March 14th, 2018 at 7 o'clock. Let's play "Respects to the Flag."
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, in which this all, with liberty and justice in its own right.
Please note the roll.
Noted.
How's approval of the agenda?
I'll make a motion to prove the agenda as presented.
Moved and supported on either comment. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Onto the consent agenda.
I'll make a motion to prove the consent agenda as presented.
Support.
Moved and supported.
Jack? I have a concern, I noticed, and I don't want our engineer not to be paid, but there are some engineering bills for the sinkhole. And I don't, and please, this is just a concern, we should keep track of these because it's not our fault that we have to pay all this money to move the water and sewer lines and have an engineer out there to ensure the safety. So, I would like to see that these engineering bills somehow or another get billed back to the total expense of the sinkhole damage.
And I totally agree with you.
Okay, thanks. Other than that, I have no questions.
So, do you want to set them aside or just pay them on the settlement?
We'll pay and know, we'll keep track of them in the Water Sewer Committee.
Okay. Any other questions? Roll call.
Trustee Nichols?
Yes.
Trustee Curtis?
Yes.
Trustee Payne?
Yes.
Trustee Durk?
Yes.
Trustee Ferrari?
Yes.
Trustee Wright, yes. And Supervisor Dunn?
Yes. Public comment on items not on the agenda?
Yes, sir. Come on up.
Okay. State your name and then...
Sure. Thank you. I've not seen the agenda, but I don't think it's on it. Yeah, my name is Les Pratt, and I live at 160 Stony Lake Drive in Stony Lake condominium complex. And I'm here with a few of my neighbors. We're concerned, confused about what's going on with the legacy building.
Can I interrupt just for a second?
Pardon me?
The legacy is going, we're gonna have a public hearing on it just in a couple minutes.
Okay.
If you can hold that since it has to do with the legacy, we'll give you plenty of time to talk.
Alright, I appreciate it.
Okay, thank you. Any other public comment on items not on the agenda? Okay, we'll move on. On to the public hearing. 925 LaPierre Legacy Entertainment LLC. This is the public hearing, whether there be a motion.
I move to open the public hearing at 7:06 PM to discuss requests for a new Class C liquor license for 925 LaPierre Legacy Entertainment LLC.
Support.
Moved and supported. Roll call.
Trustee Curtis?
Yes.
Trustee Payne?
Yes.
Trustee Ferrari?
Yes.
Supervisor Dunn?
Yes.
Trustee Wright, yes. Trustee Durk?
Yes.
And Trustee Nichols?
Yes.
Thank you. Sir, you can come back up now. Sorry to make you run like that, but just proceed, girl.
Our running days are over. Yeah, again, Les Pratt, Stony Lake Complex. Again, we're confused, concerned, like I said earlier, specifically about what's going on behind the legacy building. And three things come to mind. Pardon me. First of all, is the possibility of serving alcohol outside on the area that faces where we live. The second thing that we're very concerned about is the public access to the private lake duels. We've already had using the legacy parking lot. People sneak out of the lake with boats, and there were several ice shanties that went up during the winter. And this is a private lake, but they're using that area to access it, sneak a boat in, that type of thing. The third thing that we're concerned about that I'd like to bring up is a possible development of the hillside that sits between the building and the lake. And I just wanted to get those things out so that the board is aware of it. Again, we're hearing and seeing all sorts of different things. And I'm hoping that you consider that we're residents, we live there. And there's some people that have lived there for 15 years. It's a very quiet, private, nature-filled area. And there's a lot of good people in there, and we're concerned about the drinking, possible events being held in the parking lot or over the hill. And I guess I, when you're making decisions, if you could think of us in there, and our homes, I know they're condominiums, they look all the same. Looking out from our homes is a very short distance to the back of the legacy building. So, when you consider things about that building, please, maybe the word developing, what can we develop? Maybe that shouldn't come to mind first, but perhaps thank the people that have lived there for, like I said, almost 15 years. Okay?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, I appreciate it very much.
Any else for public hearing?
Good job, Les.
Good evening, Mary Ann Keynes, I'm also a resident of the Stony Lake Village condo complex. And I just would like to piggyback on what Mr. Pratt has said in regards to this evening's discussion about obtaining a liquor license. I've spoken to you before, you know my feelings against having liquor served at this facility, but there are some concerns both for, should liquor be served within that facility? I guess I'm looking to see would there be designated drinking areas? The whole building, would that have access? Could somebody purchase a beverage and go through the whole building? Or is it bar grill designated serving and drinking areas? And again, extending to what Mr. Pratt said about how do we have assurances from the township that no alcohol will be taken inside? There is some grading areas where if somebody should fall down in that area, could get seriously hurt. We have the parking lot area, of course, we have the shoreline, and you wouldn't want any residents that might not have their full faculties with them going into those areas. Before the planning commission approved the amended site plan, I had brought up the idea, you know, where's the security plan? And there was no mention of that before approval of the site plan. I don't know if that has to be part of the site plan or not, but I'm just saying, please keep that in mind, because right now, there is no security on the exterior. I'm not sure if there is in the interior, but there is our concerns, as Mr. Pratt said, that there are people using the shoreline without permission, and Lake Dules is a private lake. So, I just would like to bring about that, you know, is there a security plan or what type of hours of operation were approved? And I have heard that there might be all-night parties. I know that the facility approval operation hours is not all night, so would they come, before they could book an event like that, would they come to the township and get special approval? Because their hours of operation are not to operate all evening, so they could not have an all-night party. I guess we just want assurances from you folks, from the planning commission, from the township board, that if there's something that exceeds what's been approved, what is the procedure for the Legacy Center to come to you to get approval? And if we see there are things that are done that are causing safety issues, whatever, what procedures do we take? Do we call the Sheriff Department? Who do we call to report these type of things? Because we do have concerns once alcohols being served, like I said, have their designated areas. Will it, you know, how do we prohibit it from going to the exterior? And what kind of security and safety plans to assure not only our safety, but patrons' safety and those on LaPierre Road and in our subdivision? Thank you for your time this evening.
Thank you. Any other comments on the legacy side? Come on up, sir.
Thank you.
State your name and where you live.
Yep, my name's Mark Swiskowski, I live in Metamora. I have a business in Oxford. And I guess I was just, you know, as I keep up on this, I'm just curious as to why there is such a standstill or an issue with this as, you know, there's a golf course serving alcohol, there's Boulder Point, having weddings, outdoor parties, there's all of these things happening around the lake. To me, I see the Legacy Center as an asset to the community. As a business owner in the community, I see so many more people coming in, recognizing this great township and everything that it's doing. Not only is it just a place for kids, but it is a place for young adults. I mean, it's great that 21, 22, 23-year-old college kids aren't playing video games, that they can come in and do bowling or do something active, bowling. These are things that around us may not even be in the community. You know, you have places like Ultimate Soccer, haven't, there's not been an incident there in the 11 years it's been in existence, and it has a liquor license as well, Class C. So, I guess it's just, one thing I would ask is, where is, where's the issue been to just approve something like this? As I feel like it's only positive within the community. I understand, in hearing some of the comments, you know, that there's people on the lake, and I guess that could be coming from the neighborhood or anywhere, right? Anywhere that you go, McDonald's, anybody could come in there and use the lake if they're not supposed to. I don't understand, I don't see it a lot, but I think that those are easy things to overcome. As far as having entertainment, a bar area there outside, it's not as loud as the road. Even the trucks going by on the road, I think, are a lot louder. I think the improvements that they've done with lighting, safety. Personally, you know, I'm in the insurance business, and I've seen a live run, a lot of people through that building. I can tell you that some of the best insurance companies around have come in and just been awed with the way they've done things at this facility. The safety of it, the security plans, the risk management, the time they put into it. So, I think it's important that you all consider that and look into that as well, so. Appreciate it.
Anybody else like to speak? Not bowling, is there a motion?
I move to close the public hearing, discuss requests for a new Class C liquor license for 925 LaPierre Legacy Entertainment LLC at 7:15 PM.
Support.
Moved and supported. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? To answer some of these questions, I don't comment on agenda items, you know, that are not on the agenda or during public hearings. But I hope a lot of your questions, I'm sure they're gonna be answered tonight, whether it's from your side or for yours. So, let's proceed. Move on to the first reading of Baldwin Road rezoning. Is there any questions or motions or would have talked about this?
I move to send a second reading for possible approval of the rezoning for parcel P 0407101018, S and two suburban farm zoning. R1 single-family residential zoning. It's possible approval of the rezoning of parcel P 0407101019, suburban farm two, suburban farm zoning. R1 single-family residential zoning to be presented at the date of 11th, 2018, I for township board trustees for regular meeting.
Moved?
Support.
And supported. Any other questions? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. It's moved on to item eight. Did I skip something here? Boy, these are different. Oh, so I gotta read up this one. Am I missing?
Susan, can you ask Joe to pull his mic in?
Oh, this one's right. This one's right.
Susan, you are going to the last question.
Moving on to item nine, second reading. Minor possession ordinance 438.004. This has been talked about quite a bit. Is there any board comment or any questions on this? Would there be a motion?
I move to adopt ordinance number 438.004 as presented.
Moved and seconded. Any other questions? Roll call.
Court Wright, yes. Treasure Ferrari?
Yes.
Trustee Durk?
Yes.
Trustee Payne?
Yes.
Trustee Nichols?
Yes.
Trustee Curtis?
Yes.
Supervisor Dunn?
Yes.
I would say I really like this ordinance, because first-time offenders, at least a little bit of a chance. On to zoning ordinance 678.016.
I move to approve the following amendments. A, R1, modify section 1.3 enabling authority. Two, modify section 3.7 scheduled district regulations. Three, modifying section 8.8 parking and storage for commercial recreational vehicles. Four, modify section 7.5 standards for landscape materials. Five, modify section 13.5 site condominiums to the charter township of Oxford zoning ordinance 678 as presented.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any questions? Roll call.
Trustee Payne?
Yes.
Supervisor Dunn?
Yes.
Trustee Durk?
Yes.
Trustee Nichols?
Yes.
Court Wright, yes. Treasure Ferrari?
Yes.
And Trustee Curtis?
Yes.
On to the fire department. You got anything, chief? No notice? Okay. Move on to unfinished business. Not a agreement. Folks, we, we have talked about this before. All the communities, well, the townships and the villages have taken this to their respective councils and boards to send it back. So, provision for all of us to sign it. Is there any questions on the NOTA agreement? Yes?
I have several. I've submitted several comments there, and reviewing the document again, there's several of them that were not addressed, and either by way of comment back from the NOTA board or included in the agreement. Just as an example, there's no provision for the NOTA representative to sign this thing. There was an agreement between NOTA and the outline to be released.
So, just the signature page is not good enough?
No, not for me. So, the rest of the board is in favor, move forward. That's, that's fine with me.
Okay. Joe?
You guys have my three comments, I had a NOTA agreement. I've mentioned them last time. The main thing is, I'll summarize them. The NOTA board, not all of them are represented as a local government. We got into that issue in the past with the OESA. I don't want to get into that again. NOTA has been existing for quite some time. My feeling, it should not be self-sufficient. The 80,000 or any monies from general funds from the communities should not be any longer, should all be village-based. It's had a chance to prove itself. We've did the incubation, we've pretty much given it the life. Now it's up to them to justify their need to the voters. And three, I would rather not have any village, a contract that's village-based be longer than the village that's approved for, which is since 2019. 18 for operating in 19. Otherwise, you could, anybody come in front of us, any contract we have, police, fire department, saying, we want a unit contract that extends 10 years. You're on the hook for it. If the village fails, then we deal with it then. We should only improve contracts that are as long as the villages are. Those are our comments.
Any other comments? Any motion?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to table the NOTA agreement at this time.
I'll support that motion.
Wow. The move to table it. Any other questions? Yes?
Actually, the, the, postponed.
I'm sorry, postponed.
I am, I'm, I'm, I'm.
Thank you.
Okay. Let's do, all in favor just signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Opposed?
Opposed.
Please note two, two of those. Moving on to safety path easement acquisition. Joe?
Board members, as you can see from the memo, we've worked with property owners, we're along Seymour Lake Road to get some easements. We've covered agreement with three of them. The fourth one, we're still negotiations, but I'd like to have us go ahead and purchase this. We had the easement, the appraisals available at the office. It's quite a lengthy document, so, Court Wright, why hasn't chose out to include it in the packet? But if the board's in favor, there's a motion here. I'd like to make a motion to authorize Safety Committee Chairman Joseph Chief Ferrari to be following easement purchases. Offer to purchase easement, 6,480 plus rope upper trees landscape for 1675 Seymour Lake Road. 4,00617 for 1711 Seymour Lake Road. 4,00725 for 1757 Seymour Lake Road. 1,00620 for 1781 Seymour Lake Road. These funds are to be expensed to 297852971001, easement acquisition. Chairman Ferrari's work with sharp engineering and tracking the appropriate documents, transferring easement purchases from the property owners to the Charter Township of Oxford. By completion, Chairman Ferrari said to work with sharp engineering and transferring these same easements from the Charter Township of Oxford to the Road Commission for open development.
Moved?
Second.
Second. I have a comment. I'm gonna vote against this. We've got, ended-of-the-year audits coming up. I've invited our assessor here, she's not gonna have very good news. I'd like to postpone, postpone all of our expenditures until we know exactly where we are. And that goes for the $100,000, Joe, you want for redoing the safety path. I'm not saying we're not gonna do them, but I think it's our responsibility to figure out where we sit financially before we start kicking out 100, 200,000 here and quarter of a million here.
Yeah, this is on the safety path.
I don't care. I just think we should all do it once. And that's my comment, Joe. Do you have another? Any other comment?
Yeah.
Yes.
I would agree with the chair.
Just for the record, there's 50,000 fund dollars for the safety path.
Well, we've had all the comments. Roll call.
Trustee Curtis?
Yes.
Trustee Payne?
Yes.
Trustee Ferrari?
Yes.
Supervisor Dunn?
No.
Court Wright, yes. Trustee Durk?
Yes.
And Trustee Nichols?
No.
Moving on to the safety path maintenance repairs, Treasure Ferrari, this is a $100,000 one.
Yep, this is...
That we don't have in the budget.
Our next expenses. That we are trying to get the next condition, safety paths repaired. This would be requesting from general fund. We're not requesting any new monies, currently general fund. We have 246,000 that's unallocated for 18. There's no new money or anything, it's something sitting in the budget that's unassigned. We're just asking to assign 100,000 of the 246 to finish these repairs. I'd like to make a motion that the Oxford Township Board Trustees authorize a 2018 general fund budget amendment, transfer 100,000 for 101-299-890 contingency to 101-299-933-297, safety path maintenance.
Second.
Moved and seconded. I have another comment, same as I did before. I'd like to reschedule it until we have where we are financially. And Joe, I'd like to not wonder why we're not using, Ori Township gets, seems like millions of dollars for their safety path. Do we have any, are we going out after money? It's just, we never seem to get any grant money. I'm not trying to pick on you, Joe, but you went to school to do these, this type of work. Why aren't we, you know, now that we're part of SNCOG, you know, they're supposed to have this big pot of money that I know Ori is digging a little bit out of. Why aren't we?
A lot of us spend easement acquisitions. We helped solve that from the first motion. A lot of times, we can't get any grant findings, like through SNCOG, because other ones, we don't have easements. I could get money tomorrow to connect with Ori Township, but there's not the political will to do any condemnation. So, if there's not political will to do that, we can't connect Ori. I can get money for that tomorrow.
Has condemnation been brought up before this board and have they acted on it?
They always acted on it in February in 16, I believe.
The board says no condemnation.
That's exactly what they said.
I don't remember that. Any other comments?
I can bring it back?
Nope. I just, I'm just giving my opinion, Joe. I have a right to do that.
Oh, yeah.
You know, could I be wrong?
Sure.
Roll call.
Treasure Ferrari?
Yes.
Trustee Payne?
Yeah.
Trustee Curtis?
Yes.
Trustee Nichols?
No.
Trustee Durk?
Yes.
Court Wright, no. And Supervisor Dunn?
No.
Moving on. Purchase of UTV for the safety path maintenance. Who in the safety path would like to talk about this?
I could do if you'd like. We had a contractor that was doing our safety path winter maintenance. What happened unfortunately is they've not been able to take care of that. So, we're trying to get done through a different route, and Parks Rock has agreed to do that for us. They've given us an agreement. We take a look at it. Agreement, they're gonna do it. Couple of conversions. I had Ron set one, and then I sent out a different one that basically allows all the maintenance to get done through them at the current wage. Basically, what would happen is when we did same things with the mower, we'd purchase a piece of equipment, be up to Ron's folks to take care of it, maintain it, and take care of our safety paths with it. I started running to another winner of having a contractor, fortunately, that couldn't perform the duties. We're fortunate, we kinda got away with one this winter, but I don't want to be that spot. Jack, Curtis, wanna add something to that, please do.
Yeah, Jack. Yeah, you know, I looked at the safety path maintenance and went back and found that Township did, in fact, purchase an expensive lawnmower. And it's now probably in some scrap steel somewhere. But using this philosophy from buying the first mower, and we haven't since purchased a new mower, but yet the paths still get mowed. I thought this was a good idea to allow them to purchase this the first time, do the maintenance upkeep. If they wreck it, they fix it, they buy a new one, but they'll continue to do our safety path mowing, or plowing of the snow.
I move to approve the purchase of a 2018 Polaris utility task vehicle based on a quoted amount of 21,827. Chapman's Ford Center dated February 23rd, 2018. This quoted amount of 21,827 is to pay by the Charter Township of Oxford. The amount paid by the Charter Township of Oxford is to the expense of safety path fund, 297-850-2977000, equipment acquisition.
Moved?
Second.
Second. I do have another comment. Joe, historically, the snow removal has been done near the schools. Is it going to be doing, gonna be done throughout the entire system, or does it stated, is it stated in this contract where it's going to be done?
It's stated, pretty much, we're gonna do what we have done. The new maintenance agreement says that Safety Path Committee Chairman Supervisor can add, add to that if he needs to.
Okay. Yes?
Mr. Chairman? I noticed that the purchase of this equipment is out of LaPierre. Can we have somebody in Oxford that can sell this equipment?
Got that from Ron.
Mr. Park, correct, accurate.
We've got experience dealing with them out of Alba. This is a piece of equipment that's proved itself other places, the horsepower, service. So, you know me, how much I base on local LG. That's what our park superintendent had suggested, went up to the legwork on, that's what he has recommended. If you're suggesting Cub Cadets, deny them close to that, as far as horsepower, durability, those types of things.
Yeah, I'm suggesting that, and particularly if we can get somebody from Oxford to provide the equipment.
Nobody around here sells those, not at Polaris. Not what, what we're gonna use it for, for diversity. It's gonna have a V plow on, it's gonna have a cab, it's gonna have doors. That is just a basic stripped-down model, so. I let Jeff spec it out from calling other maintenance departments, what they've used, so.
I can't believe that we can't get this equipment. I mean, it doesn't look like the same thing.
We buy everything from, we bought everything from Birding Street, all our lawnmowers, all our chainsaws. If we could deal local LG, you know, I would. I know I'm all about saving money.
Did you talk to them at all?
I believe Jeff has, yeah. And he did a price competitor, just on the durability of the vehicle. Cub Cadets only been building it for a couple of years. I mean, Polaris, if you know ATVs, this thing here, they're the leader in the field. So, again, you know, if we're gonna buy something, we're gonna buy what's the best. I don't want to be having my staff maintain something, so.
Well, I do know your feeling about buying local.
Sure.
And I do respect, you know, your opinion in this case. I guess I would deviate from my normal position on this then and agree with what you want to do.
Yeah, I mean, again, I think my tracker expects, speaks for itself. If we didn't think it was the best deal, we wouldn't do it. And we really appreciate everything we get from Kula, everything that they do for our department in this township, so.
Appreciate your response.
Yep, you're welcome.
I can't believe you changed your mind.
I didn't very seldom change my name.
I see the best.
I would say they're teasing.
Well, again, I have nothing hide. I mean, you know, we've done a lot of business with Kula, and we appreciate your support, but then again, I got, you know, I'm paying Jeff to be our park superintendent. It's his recommendation that's, we'll be doing.
And if this thing doesn't run properly, you're gonna love this thing.
It's Jeff's fault, absolutely. It's our behavior, absolutely.
He needs it. Curtis, you have a question?
Yeah, just the picture you see there, doesn't it have the roll bar on the top of it, according to Jeff? He did inspect the salt very thoroughly. He wants to make sure he's doing the right thing for the township, for Parks Rock. The original plan was, as you saw, we should split it 50/50, but our committee was willing to pay it, well, recommend the board pay it in full. But Ryan came to us saying it's further, but we felt that the original, the recommendation of Chief Jeff committee was right.
Any other questions? Was there a motion down? Okay. Roll call.
Court Wright, yes. Treasure Ferrari?
Yes.
Trustee Curtis?
Yes.
Trustee Durk?
Yes.
Trustee Nichols?
Yes.
Supervisor Dunn?
No.
And Trustee Payne?
Yes.
I have my own reasons, and I'll just keep them to myself, not really important.
Next is the safety path maintenance agreement. We've kinda revised that to have a couple point contacts as to how we want this to have to go. We kind of revised that to have a couple point contacts as to how we want this to go. So we had the one that packed that I sent you guys one over this morning. Basically, the main thing is to, changes were to change it to the current seasonal rate because we're not going to have a certain fixed rate in there. This folks should go from 38 to 39 an hour, you know, we should pay his going rate. And second part is to have the Safety Path Committee Chairperson and the Township Supervisor the one that can change it. Because so Ron's folks has got seven people coming out going, I want this change or I want that change. They work it through the process.
Yes, Curtis. Yeah, on the screen above you and all is handed out tonight are the two agreements that have been circulated. The first one was submitted by Parks Rock Director Davis and the other one was forwarded by Treasure Ferrari. The items underlying red indicate differences between the agreement. So those are the items you need to focus on properly of which one is you want to improve.
Any other questions?
Just keep in mind, folks, that hourly rate, that covers everything we need to do the task at hand. So, you know, it's not like we bill you for gas, oil, travel time, equipment. If we have to run a piece of equipment, that's all inside.
We know you'd be fair, but we want to be fair.
Yeah. And I just want to reiterate with Joe, so we did offer, Curtis, to split the machine with you. I mean, you guys know I'm not here to take money off your plate and put it on ours. We don't have to save the taxpayers, might as well, I'm all about, so. If we can save you from doing all this stuff, we'd love to do it.
You know, I just got back into town, so if I haven't really done my homework, because I haven't.
No, you're fine.
I flew in from Florida last night, so.
Yeah.
It's just. What's that?
Tough life.
Yes, tough life. Ron, can somebody, is this taking care of, or what? Does it take care of roots and?
We do everything. I mean, everything from deer, deer to cold patching, to cutting trees, to picking up litter, painting the logos on the trail as far as stop ahead, you name it. If Joe calls us, we're on it. Again, you guys know Jeff and his work ethic, it speaks for itself.
Well, the reason, because I see a lot of the disrepair that's in the safety paths. So normally we hired companies that, you know, do asphalt work and.
Some of that stuff we can't do, like where you have to get a Ryan, Oster, Birmingham Steel, or Ajax, something like that. Yes, we could do my. Yeah.
You know, I do agree with this because I, you know, safety on those paths is, you know, the utmost. We don't want anybody tripping, falling, and the money is already there. So I'm not going to be a bah humbug all night, so I'll probably support this one.
I'll make a motion to put the Safety Path Maintenance Agreement, I differentiate. It's as submitted by Treasure Ferrari.
Moved.
Second.
Second. Any other questions? Yes. Yes, Mike.
So there's no end date on this maintenance agreement, correct?
Correct.
And you submitted an hourly rate.
Right.
But if the, if the rate should go up for you at a ridiculous amount.
We're all government employees, we know that's not going to happen. With all due respect.
I'm a budget person, I know it will happen.
Yeah, well, here's our guarantee, you know, you go out, you're right.
It depends on what government you're talking about. The federal government doesn't have a problem.
Yeah, we will not. I mean, it's one thing that we're not going to, again, we'll work with you.
So, but I'm just saying, Joe Ferrari is probably, covers you better because it's, yeah, okay.
And that's fine, yep.
All right.
To be fair, yeah, absolutely.
Curtis?
In this agreement, I would prefer to see the supervisor sign this agreement versus the community chairperson, based upon personal preference. And also, referred to the grass kind. Is there some discretion that you would give advice to, to the Township to say that we're wanting too much of the road conditions where you want?
I think they're mowing some areas that should be taken care of by neighborhood associations, absolutely. We've got that right now. Because we do get pinched in the summer a couple of times when we're trying to maintain the soccer fields and ball fields. We'll spend a half a day just that mowing common areas that should be paid by the homeowners association. So I think what you should do is maybe schedule a meeting with Jeff, ride the system, make notes, and then make a phone call. And do that prior to spring before we start cutting. Because once we start, then they just assume we're doing it.
Any other questions down here? Down here?
I would agree to have the chairman, you know, sign this.
All the motions, if they're going to go, a part of the motion has to be included.
And while we're on that, Mr. Dunn, just to throw one real quick. As you know, we're building the observation deck off the Palan trail. So this year we've been plowing the trail between Berdick and Drainer. It's been a huge success. Everybody loves the fact that we plow that stretch of it. So unless you guys see any problems next year, we'd like to just, at our cost, just go ahead and continue to plow that for the residents. It's been a real asset to those elderly people who walk that, that it's cleared. Because once the sun hits it, it's perfect, so.
Yes, Curtis.
That will be.
The Palan Trail.
Yeah, Palan Trail. That's where we asked that.
I just wanted to let you know about that. We have.
Okay, we have a motion. If there's no change, we're, yeah.
Can Joe include Phil Dunn signing in here?
Sure, yeah. I'll amend my motion to change Oxford Township Safety Path Committee Chairperson to Oxford Township Supervisor.
That is re-support. Re-supported.
You have to vote on that amendment first.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? On the amendment.
Now you vote on the actual motion.
Okay, let's do a roll call.
Trusty Payne?
Yes.
Supervisor Dunn?
Yes.
Trusty Dirk?
Yes.
Trusty Curtis?
Yes.
Treasure Ferrari?
Yes.
Seymour Celebration Fireworks Contractor?
Look Wright? Yes, as the annual Seymour Celebration approaches us, we need to prove the fireworks display scheduled for?
July 6th and 7th.
July 6th and 7th.
Same system, again, folks, same pyrotechnics that we've had all 10 years. Again, we'll work closely with Pete's staff, Lieutenant Patterson, Sheriff. We'll have all our proper permits with the state of Michigan and everything, all the insurance, we already have the insurance, I think I might include it in there. It'll be no different than the first nine years, so it's more of a formality, just to bring it before you for the state and make sure that you folks are aware that we're doing this.
There's not any questions? Is there a motion? Do you have a question? You can do it if you want.
Do it all. The chair certificate will need to be updated.
From, yes.
That's in the bag.
Yeah. We'll do that when we send it all, Curtis, to the chairman, to Pam.
So with that, I move to permit William Dunn, Oxford Township Supervisor, the authority to sign the 2018 Great Lakes Fireworks Contract, and agreement with annual Seymour Celebration for the dates of Friday, July 6th, 2018, and scheduled to July 7th, 2018. Further, the Oxford Township Parks Recreation Department will continue to work closely with the Oxford Township Park Department and the County Sheriff Department to ensure that all safety and health regulations are followed as it pertains to the community.
Support. It's moved and supported. Any other questions? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Good luck on that, Ron.
Thanks, very likely.
It's a good deal.
Thank you.
Oh, by the way, do you need any volunteers to help clean up after?
We can always use volunteers besides you, Mr. Dunn. Yes, we could.
I remember that.
I saw that.
That was a paid political announcement. DTE easement for the Verizon Cellular Tower at Seymour Lake Park. Who's, Look Wright?
Yes, as part of the Verizon agreement and with the DTE providing the electricity to, to the Verizon Tower, easement is necessary from DTE and the Township to be executed. So if they are in compliance, it's normally, there's a little map there, you can see the DTE and air and another drawing with the full circle.
Are you suggesting, again, since I got in time late, that we give them an easement, sign the easement contract, or?
Yes, yeah, we need it for the cell tower. So Gary and I.
But I mean, the easement's already there, it's already the description.
Gary and I pretty much talked in detail. We don't do this, we're kind of stuck by the A-ball. But if you, it's between the fence of our neighbor and the task court fence. So it's an area of the park that we would never occupy or use. If a transformer was sitting there, it's not going to disrupt any future recreation needs at all, so.
How many feet are you getting up, Ron?
I think it's like six or eight feet wide. It's not very wide, and I don't know the total length on Elgin. Is it five feet wide, Kurt?
It's five feet plus or minus from, it's probably maybe the center line of the line to the right of the property line.
It runs, like I said, runs adjacent to the tents court. And it's mine.
This is the center line, center line, it looks like a 12-foot easement or 10-foot.
And I think we have easements in the back, the transformers, we have set back there to Edison for the same thing, coming off Cochrane, I mean, going towards Cochrane, the maintenance barn, there's a transformer back there, so I believe there are current easements. So Gary and I talked at length and he didn't think it was a problem under that, so.
Well, you got to get power there, so I'm making a motion.
Go ahead.
I move to approve the DTE electric company underground easement right of way, number 48758214-48758231 as presented, and authorize Supervisor Phil Dunn, William Dunn, to sign the easement document on behalf of the Chair of Township of Oxford.
Second.
My only thing is, I talked to Curtis a little bit about it too, is I like the easement, but let's say the tower's no longer there, well, that permanent easement's sitting out.
You could abandon it at that time. I mean.
We have it in there, let's see.
But it's in a part of the park, Joe, that if you're familiar with that part of the park, there's no way to get to that.
There's a setback limitations.
Yeah, that's where the cell tower is located. Because A, that's where their range needed to be, and B, it's a part of the park that we never use.
So in the future, there'd be no need for that. We could easement on there. We never need to get rid of the easement to use it for X.
You can't put it that close to the property line, Joe.
Yeah, there's no place to go.
Okay, I just want to make sure we couldn't use that.
If it went down the park road, I'd say, no, we're not doing it, but that's.
So, Ron, is, most of these utilities need bigger easements for trucks?
I believe, yeah, they probably occupy a bigger easement for maintenance as far as trucks.
I mean, is there, is there a bigger easement? I haven't seen any paperwork on it.
No, I mean, that's what Gary had sent to me from there.
Is it assumed they can go anywhere on the park to access?
No, I understand just that easement. They're just running that easement for their line.
I just haven't seen the easement.
Well, Bill will be the one signing, so you can review if there's any issues at that point.
I'll be here tomorrow morning to meet with Lieutenant Patterson, we can make a quick call to.
I'm with him.
You're with me tomorrow evening, yeah, so we can make a call quick in the morning.
I just don't want to leave something hanging out there.
There's name. Oh, I understand.
Motion is made?
Motion is made and signed.
Roll call.
Look Wright, yes. Treasure Ferrari?
Yes.
Supervisor Dunn?
Yes.
Trusty Payne?
Yes.
Trusty Curtis?
Yes.
Trusty Nichols?
Yes.
And Trusty Dirk?
Yes.
On to 925 La Piero Legacy Entertainment LLC. Christian, Jennifer, do you need a minute to set up anything?
Yeah, we have a PowerPoint.
You know what, we'll take a three-minute recess. Back from session. Please state your name and where you're from.
Christian Mills, 925 North La Piero Legacy Center. Good evening. Appreciate everyone's time. We've visited the liquor license quite a bit, so hopefully tonight we'll be able to come to a positive conclusion. I'm going to apologize in advance because I've taken the time to put together a lengthy presentation that I think will help address all of your questions and address some of our neighbors' concerns as well. So we're the applicant, 925 La Piero Legacy Entertainment. Our business description, according to our application, you know, we possess a full-service bar restaurant serving beer, wine, spirits in a 55,000 square foot area within the Legacy Center. The licensed premises are segregated from the rest of the Legacy Center, and patrons will not be permitted to have alcohol unless, except, within the licensed premise. There is a food truck style kitchen to serve food and a prep area behind it. There is a large circular bar in the center of the space. There's a full-size bowling alley with license, within the licensed premise, as well as mini bowling, footballing around the perimeter. Around the perimeter of the premises, also an elevated go-kart track and attached in a fan center. There'll be plenty of activities for the entire community.
I'm going to ask you a stop.
Sure.
Is there any more questions on this? I've been so I can get a little feedback.
How's it going to be enforced? Like, let's say I get a drink from the food truck and I want to go to pick up my kid over to the bounce house.
Yeah, like every bar within a mall or any situation, you are not allowed to take alcohol outside of the premise. So within the bar, you have people who are managing that, whether it's waitstaff, whether it's security, you know, whether it's management. So that's just standard practice, whether it's Concho Pearl or whether it's the golf course.
24.
Or 24th Street, you know, you can't.
It's not as big of an open area.
Well, actually, I'll go through this too, because I actually have a.
I see multiple problems with that. I could grab my beer, get my kid, and then go see this way.
Yeah, I have a diagram for you, and it's also reviewed and approved by the alcohol from the state.
There'll be security people there or something?
So, well, just like any other premise that serves alcohol. So I'll go through that and I'll visually show it to you and I'll also answer your security questions, okay? Yeah, actually, and I'm okay either way, but I think that if you let me get through this, we should answer most of your questions and we can revisit any of the slides. So the.
I just told them to take notes if they have questions, so you can go back to them.
Okay. So the action requested is requesting approval of a new quota Class C liquor license with the following permits as applied to the MLCC. So the first permit is a dance entertainment permit. Basically, the way it's been explained and what this permit is, the state has to validate the area where people can dance. the area where people can dance. So, they want to review that that area is safe, uh, and it's, you know, meets their requirements for people to dance within a licensed area. So, it's called a dance entertainment permit. Which is really kind of a formality, you know, they wanna make sure that you're not dancing on the tables or on the bar. Uh, extended hours permit. So, occasionally, we've sponsored all-night parties, lock-ins, Legacy Center, for example, Oxford High School, senior all-night party, youth groups from Kensington Church. Uh, we just got done with Kensington. We had over 650 kids. Lock-ins, uh, which require, you know, those kids to be closely chaperoned and supervised. And always when we do a lock-in, the group that's bringing the lock-in, they bring their own security, you know, they bring their own insurance, and they're fully responsible for those children in conjunction with, you know, our staff. So, uh, the event center provides a great venue for these sort of gatherings, and they're really popular, and really, it's an important part of our revenue stream. You know, you can imagine the Oxford Senior All Night Party, which is a really positive event for our community, uh, the al, the alternative is to have them either drive to an all-night party or be out all night long. So, the reason why they've established senior all-night parties is so that kids are safe. They have a environment to go that's protected, that's monitored and managed, so they're not out getting in trouble on their graduation day. But there are a number of events, lock-ins, church gatherings, Boy Scouts, you know, all of these events that people want to use this facility for different reasons. So, the extended hour permit, um, the MLCC just requires a permit for after-hours gatherings in a licensed premise. Obviously, there's no alcohol permitted, so we're not asking to serve alcohol after 2:00. But in order to have people in the event center specifically, or bowling, or access, you know, accessing any of those activities in the licensed area, uh, we need to have a special permit that's reviewed, managed by MLCC. So, after 2:00, um, we'd like the flexibility to host such events and continue to host such events, which are, uh, popular in the community and significant part of our revenue plan. And it's good for, it's good for our kids. These are, we've had a lot of them over the last two years, and I wanna note that, uh, to the best of my knowledge, we've never had a noise complaint. We've never had teenage kids running out of the building into the lake. We've never had anyone drunk fall down the hill. Uh, and we've had hundreds, sometimes thousands, uh, sometimes over a thousand kids rotating through that building. And I don't think we've disrespected or disturbed any of our neighbors, because we certainly haven't had a complaint as such. So Kensington Church, Oxford Senior All Night Party, Woodside Bible, the Kids Gala, um, we did Boy Scouts of America, and then we have Oakland Christian that's coming up. Uh, Sunday AM hour permit. This is really simply a permit, um, that allows us to serve alcohol before noon on Sunday. We don't intend on opening our bar on a routine basis before noon, but, you know, there are going to be situations where there's a bridal shower, or a baby shower, or someone who wants to rent any of our five rooms and have a champagne brunch, or a champagne toast, or a glass of wine, something like that, to go along with their event. And again, this doesn't impact our community. You know, it, it, it isn't that people are gonna have a baby shower, a glass of wine, and, you know, go out and be disruptive in the community. This is happening inside the building. Portable bar permit. You know, really, how we manage the bar inside the bar, um, it's important, but it, it, we're not extending the bar, we're not creating a second bar. This is within the approved premise, so we hope that the Legacy Center becomes a community event center of choice, weddings, graduation parties, seminars, corporate training, staging large events of the sort. A second portable bar is not just necessary, it's critical. And it's kind of standard practice. If you've ever gone to a wedding, you know, you see a bartender in the corner, you know, people in the wedding aren't leaving the venue to go downstairs or to another area to a bar. It's kind of standard practice. So, for example, if we're hosting a local private wedding reception, it would be necessary to use a small portable bar confined to the licensed premise. The second bar permit is required by MLCC to utilize such a portable bar for private parties, corporate events, and weddings. This limited-use permit is only valid within the confines of the licensed bar area and can never be used outside the licensed premise. For example, it can't be used in Urban Air Trampoline Park, it can't be used in common hallways, or any other area in the Legacy Center outside the licensed premise. It's simply a permit to provide additional alcohol services for private parties events within the confines of the licensed area. So, I'm gonna give you some examples, and, you know, I think this is gonna answer some of our neighbors' questions, because I, I think one of the concerns is that we're gonna be really disruptive to our neighbors. And the reality is, uh, to date, I don't think that we have been, and, uh, we have a great example here with Boulder Point, who is a neighbor that's actually closer to our neighbors than we are. And.
No.
Actually, I have some pictures.
Thanks.
So.
People don't.
Yeah. So Boulder Point, many of you maybe are aware, or you're not aware, has a complete event center. So Boulder Point has one of the largest outdoor patios, uh, one of the larger ones in the community. Boulder Point has a portable bar. So, when you go on their wedding venue, one of the selections that you can ask for is, would you like a bar in your, in your, uh, for your event? Boulder Point has a mobile golf cart that distributes alcohol, beer, wine, and liquor throughout the entire golf course, which rolls right through our neighbor's property. So, you're serving alcohol, not just in our building, but right in their backyard. And we circled some of the media here, veranda and portable bar setup. You can see a picture of their golf cart here. You can see a picture of their outdoor wedding. So, uh, outdoor patio license. It's our hope in the future to have an outdoor patio. We've poured a cement pad in preparation for the future patio. However, we would agree to have a future vote by the Board of Trustees to open the patio in exchange for allowing us to apply for outdoor service permit with the MLCC now. So, the MLCC, you know, we wanna apply at one time, have one inspection, and we're asking for all these permits that we're, we're asking for today, so we don't have to go through another 90 or 120-day process. But we're giving you back the control. You know, if they approve that permit, the patio will not have a bar on it, so there will not be a bar outside, just the ability for people to eat and have a drink outside within the confines of the licensed premise. This will be managed similar to the outdoor patios in the community. The community is full of outdoor patios. This is not a new concept. Uh, you've got Twenty-Fourth Street Tavern, the Tap, Homegrown Brewery, the Ochs, Boulder Point, Red Naps. Every single family environment, you know, Red Naps is one of my favorite restaurants as families and kids, they have an outdoor patio. Um, you know, it's actually probably really important, I imagine, if you took Twenty-Fourth Street patio out. A lot of people like to come in, they enjoy a drink, you know, it's part of driving business when you're making a decision on a nice day where to go eat. Uh, I have pictures of outdoor patios. Uh, so you've got Boulder Point, that is their outdoor patio, you can see. Uh, Homegrown Brewery has a beautiful outdoor patio, Twenty-Fourth Street outdoor patio. I've taken some pictures to show how close these patios are to residential properties. Um, so if you can see the circle area, that's, you know, Casa Real, we have, um, Red Naps is Twenty-Fourth Street. Literally across the street is the residential unit across from the patio. This is a picture here on the right of Boulder Point and, remember engineer? Yes. Uh, you can actually see, if you look to the left of Boulder Point and where it is, those condos and those homes are pretty close. Uh, if you look across the lake, depending on, you know, how you draw a circle and how we do our, our math, you know, in some instances, the condos are closer than the Legacy Center, and other instances, they're a little farther away. But you get the point. We're neighbors on the lake, uh, we've approved an event center, you have a golf course, and you can actually see the golf course running through all the homes. So, you're serving alcohol right in their backyards. On a portable cart, sure. Does anyone have any, well, we'll keep going. So downtown Oxford Restaurants, Bar Patios, this is a better picture. You've got, um, what do you have, Twenty-Fourth Street. So, I basically took pictures of both sides of the highway. So, there's the Twenty-Fourth Street parking lot, um, and then on the other side, you have, um, what's the other bars over there, Jen?
The Tap.
That's the one.
The Tap.
The Tap.
The Tap.
And you can see the, the proximity, it's even closer to the residents, um, than we are. We're, it's probably three times closer than what we are to, you know, the condo association that's here tonight. Here's another picture of Boulder Point view. You can see where the Legacy Center is to the right. This is right in the Boulder Point parking lot. Uh, here's a picture of outdoor events that happen on a routine basis. Again, it's an event center. We actually, we took the time to call the township to ask how many noise complaints have been filed since they've opened, and I'm gonna say to the best of our knowledge, because the answer we got from the township was that there were two types of complaints. One was golf balls in resident yards, and the other complaint was long-going services starting before 7:00 AM. To the best of our knowledge, since 2000, there haven't been any noise complaints. Based on our inquisition to the township, um, you know, I haven't done as much detail with the, with the police department, but that's as far as I've gone. So, you have basically someone who is closer to residential units, closer to the community than we are, with really no issues. Okay, so hours of operation, uh, no different than probably a standard bar. Monday through Wednesday, 11 to 12, Thursday through Saturday, 11 to 2, Sunday, 11 to 12. Um, and then special events, based on appointment only, could be 7:00 AM to 12. So, that was that early Sunday morning permit, but that's not a standard practice for us. Uh, that's based on request. So, we've applied for a Sunday AM hours permit to allow us to cater specifically for special events, private catering, for example, bridal showers, baby showers. These are not outdoor events, they're inside. Safety, proposed crowd control. Basically, we have to follow the rules like everyone else, and, and I don't think we should be asked to have additional rules. You know, we have to meet the rules of, uh, the MLCC, just like any other bar. So, you know, we will meet those standards for safety requirements, or they will shut us down. Period of the story. You know, if you own a bar and you let people outside of the secured premise drinking alcohol, you could lose your license. That's what happens. So, um, what I can tell you is that, you know, we'll follow all of the rules and regulations set forth to properly run a bar and secure, secure a facility. So, all our waitstaff and management will be tipped, uh, training for intervention procedures, uh, all staff required to take onsite tip certifications will ensure that the staff will be trained for responsible service, sale, and consumption of alcohol. The MLCC for such service, but at this time, no special use permit has been submitted to township. Mind, even if the MLC grants us permission for outside dining, we have agreed to submit for Board of Trustee approval. Uh, so we're talking about the outdoor patio. Bartenders will be instructed to deny service to someone who, in their opinion, appears to be inebriated or underage. Legacy will employ another 40 to 100 people, including management and staff. So, uh, proposed crowd control. Our parking plans are submitted to township. Uh, we'll take all the reasonable steps necessary to respect the adjacent residential property in accordance with local noise ordinances. You know, again, if we're not following the rules, you guys have the power to revoke our license. So, you know, we're spending a lot of time trying to cover all the what-ifs, and that's fine, like, I think that's prudent, right? That's your job, protect public welfare, but also, it's our job to manage it. If we don't manage it accordingly, we lose our license, just like any other bar, uh, or liquor distribution facility. Uh, please note, to date, you know, we, we've had a number of all-night parties, group events, live music, fruit truck frenzy, 5:00 AM workout sessions with full music over the past year, and a half without one noise complaint.
Those are the noises.
No, I heard the noise.
Please keep it down out there. Alcohol, you'll get a chance to speak.
Okay, that I'm aware of. Additionally, we have a letter of support from the President, Sony Lake Condo Association, um, in support of this, and to note, on the association, we have three neighbors here. Uh, I'm not sure how many condos are in that facility, but my guess would be, you know, close to 100. Um, so, as we've been developing this property, we've been kind neighbors, uh, we've been respectful, and I would imagine if that wasn't the case, there'd be a lot more than three people sitting here. Uh, for large events, we'll add additional staff and security as necessary, uh, bouncers, et cetera. We have a menu for food service plans, and we have plans for interior use and layout, which I'll show you. So, this has already been submitted, hasn't changed. What we've highlighted in blue is the area for alcohol. And Joe, you know, we walked around with the MLCC, uh, because they're the ones who have to inspect our exit areas to make sure that they're properly secured and properly managed. So, they file a report, they do a review, and they tell us to make any modifications if necessary, and we follow all of those modifications. But the reality is that there aren't many areas, you know, you have a go-kart track on one side, um, there's only a few hallways, and there's only a couple of exits and entrances, which will be managed, again, like any other restaurant. Uh, here's a copy of the letter of support. This is from Karen Keller. Bill, I'm writing this email to inform the township that the residents from Sony Lake Village that are giving their opinion on direct items are not speaking on behalf of the association. They have not been authorized to speak for the association on any topic. If anyone wants their own opinion on a topic, it's their privilege. The board is not taking a stand one way or the other on the Legacy Center. Uh, we do feel it's a real asset to the community. What they have provided, provided for all ages is just great. It's a well-run organization. I would say that's a letter of support.
No, it's not. It does not have official names here.
Please.
Okay. Um, okay, so, some of the other things that we've been asked to do, uh, this is our well approval from Oakland County. We've just added the approval, so you can see that we've taken care of our water and sewer, which we've been asked to do previously. Sewer tap fee, you know, we paid the hundred and, what was it, $27,000 to, uh, tap into the sewer. So, uh, the site, the site plan, uh, has been approved, and we have a, a number of items that need to be completed, but we've put a $150,000 bond, uh, with the township to ensure the completion of those items. Uh, we paid the attorney's fees, uh, for the township, uh, based on, you know, some of the back and forth with, with this liquor license. Uh, we have a temporary certificate of occupancy for the theater event center, and actually, the entire building is permitted with the exception of the bar and the restaurant, which is pending connection with our sewer and water and final review from, um, you know, the Board of Health. Just things that are, are notable here. Uh, we employ over 200 people with 32 businesses, and we've been able to take a building that was really an expense to the community, a blight, uh, managing it. Um, we've made it safe, uh, and we've made it really a destination for the community. And I think we can argue that we've, uh, brought home values up. Um, and it's a place that literally tens of thousands of people come and enjoy and visit. Um, and we're only able to do that with the support of the township. We're only able to do that with the support of the community. Um, it's replaced in some ways a community center, which has saved over $20 million if you were to construct it yourself and manage it, because we've created a place where people from all ages can go, whether you're 75 years old and you wanna walk the hallways, or if you're autistic and you're doing job training, um, or you're a kid at Great Lakes Energy Zone, or someone doing yoga, uh, there's something in this facility for everyone. So, and actually, you know, we've gotten a lot of calls for people around the country who would like to replicate, you know, our facility, because it's probably one of the most dynamic and creative uses of, uh, reutilization or revitalization of an old manufacturing building in a community. And it was a big risk. You know, nobody knew how this was gonna turn out, and the only one who, uh, had to gain or lose would be me. So, I've, uh, believed in this community, and I've trusted in this board to make good decisions on my behalf, and any of your decisions could kill this project. If a site plan wasn't approved, or a parking lot wasn't approved, uh, if Urban Air wasn't approved, if we didn't get the change in zoning, it would kill the entire project. So, you guys have stood by, so we, and, and we've disagreed in some areas, right? I think that's fair to say. But the alcohol license here, um, it's critical to our success in the next venture. I put millions of dollars into the event center, uh, into our bar, restaurant, and it's really what people are asking for. If it wasn't, I wouldn't, wouldn't have done it. I would've done something else. This isn't just my dream to create something, it's, it's something that's really needed and missing in our community. Some of the other things that the Legacy Center has done, we've paid over $260,000 in taxes, permit fees, $66,000, fees, $140,000. We've provided over $466,000 back to our township in the last two years. Charities, nonprofit organizations, uh, not just the Legacy Center, but the businesses that we've brought in. I'm gonna tell you the thousands of kids and the thousands of people in this community that our Legacy Center has, and I'll say are, because you're part of it, uh, that has helped support. helped support, you know, our community, our children, you know, family members who are sick, cancer charities. So, here's a few that we've done this last year. Love Inc., Oxford Orient Fish, Community Fest, Lakeville Elementary, Food Drives, Break-Athons, Stand Strong Team, or Stand Strength Team, Blessings in a Backpack, which feeds our kids. We feed over 300 kids a week. The Kids Gala, Firmly Rooted Ministry, Terrion Tough, Cell Phones for Soldiers, Rock Steady, Parkinson's Disease, Oxford Junior Wildcats, Oxford Competitive Cheer Team, Oxford Junior Wildcats, St. Joe's Church, Special Olympics, JRDF, Supporting Type 2 Diabetes, Michigan Professional Insurance Association, Detroit Pistons, Autism Awareness Team, Crossroads for Youth, Oakland Christian, Blessings in a Backpack, House of Providence, Oxford First Robotics Team. You know, we house the labor robotics team for free. We pay for their utilities, we pay for their space. We can't do that unless we're profitable. We can't do that unless the community supports us and unless you support us in your decisions. All businesses at the Legacy Center donate to local businesses. We get every single day, I have 20 of them on my desk for approval, whether it's a local softball team. We just donated $1,700 for a TV for the Wildcats gym. You know, we give money every single day, and we're able to do it because we've been successful. You know, you guys are betting on a, on a business owner and a place in your community, and it's working. We donate gift certificates, baskets, time and money to help local sports teams, Boy Scouts, Girl Scouts troops, et cetera. You get the point. So, when we're successful, our community's successful, and that's what your vote means. You know, when we talked about the community center and local businesses, we sent out basically a survey that we asked people to sign, and we had over 688 people online, and then there was probably another 300, 400 people that gathered signatures, you know, within the community. And you guys know, nobody signs these things. You know, how many times do you get a petition for signature? So, to gather, you know, a pretty significant percentage of people who are willing to sign a petition, write letters, you know, we have handwritten petitions as well in all the businesses, we have a ton of support and appreciation in our community. We've got some comments here, and I'm almost finished, but I think this is important, because your decision impacts our business and our success, and our success impacts our community. It's a great center to have in the community, fun for kids and adults. We love the Legacy Center. My son takes cooking classes there. He's learned so much. It's a great place for a community and the surrounding communities. I'm a taxpayer in Oxford, and we need a successful businesses. Legacy has proven that they're a successful business model. The Legacy Center is such a unique and important part of our community, and I feel it makes Oxford stand out. The addition of a Theater Event Center could really further, it goes on. Here's examples. You know, we may have personal feelings about alcohol, and I do too, to be honest, but every place that has family entertainment includes alcohol. Ultimate Soccer in Pontiac, Michigan, C.J. Barrymore's in Utica, Joe Dumars Fieldhouse, Chuck E. Cheese. You know, this is a Last Frontier. Chuck E. Cheese is all kids from six months to 12 years. Disney World Resort Bar Crawl, Round One Auburn Hills, Great Wolf Lodge, Kalahari Water Parks. These are all places where families gather to enjoy themselves, and yes, parents want to go where they can have a cocktail and where their kids can go have some fun. Whether we support that or not, you know, is, it's a personal issue, but I think we're proving here that if there wasn't, if it wasn't necessary for these businesses to have alcohol, I doubt that Chuck E. Cheese would put that in their model. You know, maybe necessary is a strong word, but I, I think it's a critical part of our, our business plan. Even, there were some discussions earlier about Urban Air Trampoline Parks and how they don't have alcohol. Almost every one of the Urban Air Trampoline Parks is applying for at least wine and beer, because again, parents want to have a glass of beer, they want to work on their computer, relax while their kids play. One of the last things I wanted to discuss is I've kind of pontificated on what we've done for the community and how important this is, not just to us, but our other 29, 30 tenants, because they rely on us to bring traffic in that building. When we bring traffic in that building, they get business. When they get business, they're successful and they can survive. So, it's all one community. We need you to help promote the Legacy Center and support us. They need us to be successful and have businesses in a draw. All we're asking for is to be treated equally and fairly. We've proven that we're respectful neighbors. We've been in business two and a half years, and we've done nothing but improve this property for everyone surrounding the Legacy Center. Concho Pearl. Concho Pearl was approved by this board seven to zero. Every single board member approved the liquor license for Concho Pearl. They had some adolescents come up and speak about how it's a family restaurant and how families are going to come and drink, and it will be a family place. There was no rebut. Seven, zero, you guys approved Concho Pearl. And when you compare Concho Pearl to the impact of our Legacy Center, why would we be treated differently? There were no restrictions on their other permits that I could read in the paper. Maybe there were, I missed them in the minutes. So, that's one. And secondly, our neighbor, they have the golf course. So, you have a proven model. I know that there's fear with some of our neighbors. I know that there's fear there, and people don't like change. I have a neighbor who called me, he goes, "Christian, I wish I would have brought the property next to me, because the people who built the house, it's blocking my sun." And he's upset about that, because he had sunshine for eight years, but he didn't buy that property, and it's not his to develop. Now, the neighbor has the right to build that house as long as it's within the confines and long as they're respectful. You know, so I know that there are some fear and that there are some current concerns, but I don't think that we've earned that right for fear. I think we've earned that right for respect and a good partnership. And again, I feel like if we were disrespectful to our neighbors, there'd be more than three people sitting here today. To go back to the, to the golf course, the golf course has exactly what we have. They own a part of the lake. People can access through the golf course on that lake. And frankly, I've given permission to some of our contractors to go fish out there. That's my right. I own part of that property, I own part of that lake, and I can approve anyone to go out on that lake. And as long as they're respectful to my neighbors, fishing is fine with me. You know, if somebody wants to put a channy out there and catch a fish, I don't think they're harming someone. If they're out there causing a ruckus or a problem, I'll take care of it myself. But that's my lake. I pay for it, I pay taxes every day. That's my lake, and it's their lake too. I don't know if they have access to that lake. I don't know what their rules and regulations are, but I think people can kayak on that lake. I don't regulate who they approve to get in a kayak and ride on that lake. You know, I don't regulate what the golf course does, that's not my business. And I won't have a problem unless there's a problem. So, I'm asking you when you vote tonight, you know, to not vote in fear. You know, you have a proven track record. The golf course is closer to residents than we are. Maybe not to their individual homes, but when you look back at that map, that golf course and event center that you've approved has a golf cart that drives around serving alcohol past all of these homes. You all know that there are drunken golfers. You all know that a golf course is a family place to be. You all know that there's an outdoor patio there, and there's no problem. Otherwise, you'd probably revoke their license too. So, we're treating, we're asking you to treat us fairly, and we're asking you to vote tonight on behalf of the Legacy Center, someone who's invested, you know, a significant part of my personal money and taking a risk in this community and a risk on you, that you're going to support this vision. So, that's what I'm asking you for tonight.
Would you read that email we got from Eric?
Sure.
This was addressed to myself, copy to Supervisor Don and to Treasurer Ferrari. Curtis, as a follow-up to our telephone conversation, here's a punch list for prep for December 9. I cannot express enough that it is critical, an opening, an operating agreement is in place as to what will take place at that premise. This becomes a basis to prevent adverse uses of the premises in the future. Period.
Yeah, I agree with it, but you know, Curtis, you know, I'm for your project, but I have to, you know, take care of the township. And you mentioned, you know, you were going to go to the state and ask for outdoor use, or, once we give you that license, no matter what, you can go to the state, they have to give you that. And you, you don't need us for permission.
You can revoke my license.
No, we can't revoke your license for doing something that you're allowed to do. I'm not going to argue with you. My point is, I'm not going to vote tonight unless we have an operating agreement that is going to be in place and is rock solid. And I think we can, we can do it.
So, in the operating agreement that we provided to you, it's, everything is
That's our basis.
Clearly outlined on, on how we were going to operate the business, even asking your permission for the patio in the future. All of those things were addressed in the agreement that's been provided. All of the permits that we were asking for, our reservation, our security, you know, the entire area, how we would, how we would address and where we would serve alcohol, our menu has been added to it. It's as concise as I can bring it.
I'm not saying reinvent the whole, the whole paperwork. What I'm saying is I want to put a couple things in there to assure that you're not going to be able to circumvent the township and what we want. And you know, if you want to, I'm just, that's my feeling.
Okay. Well, I agree with you in a lot of that permit, Chris, is what you want, not what we want. That's what you want. Now, we're taking everything you've got. I've got many changes to it. Extended hours permit, I understand with the kids, that's 2:00 AM, gotta rent it for a rave. I guess I can't. If you've got extended hours, I'd come up to you and say, "Christian, I want to rent that part of the park, and for my party, I'm going to have a rave." I can do that.
But it would still be within the confines.
Yeah, but I can do, it's not all night party.
Why would that hurt? So, even if I ran a rave, people came into the building, and it didn't break any noise or sound violations, because you, you can't have sound violations regardless of what you approve. So, if I'm not breaking any laws and I'm not impacting my neighbors, who cares?
Yeah, but it's not being presented. It's being presented, the all-night party and all lollipops and unicorns. There could be other things that are going to conspire. We have to think as the board, what other things could happen there?
Why would you want to limit our success?
Now, it's nothing to do with limiting your successes, it's protecting the community. Sunday AM permits. You said you went for mimosa. Once we get that Sunday AM permit, I come in for Bloody Mary.
If we're open and you come and rent the center, the answer would be yes.
Yep, I come in for Bloody Mary. It's not just a mimosa for a wedding. We've got to think about other possible options.
What, what would the, so, here's my issue, one of the things that I'm asking for, is now you want to get into, as long as we meet the rules for the Michigan State and we follow the ordinances, and we're not impacting our neighbors, what we do inside those doors, why is it that you want to regulate that? Why, why is it that you are concerned about what we do to drive business and make it a success? There's a separation between, you know, making sure that there's public welfare taken care of. That's what the police is for, that's what the noise ordinance is for. We can't have people running around with alcohol outside at any time. We can't have people breaking the noise ordinance or being a public nuisance or endangering themselves at any time. Whether you approve that or not, we still have to manage that. So, why would you treat us any differently than, you know, the golf course or Concho Pearl? Why do you want to restrict our business and try to control our business as long as I'm meeting the requirements of the community and the township and your ordinances?
See, I disagree with Joe, because what you do inside is going to be governed by license.
Yes, absolutely.
My concern is more outside.
Which is governed by license as well, and the township police and the township ordinance. I can do what I want to do, you know, no one can.
Jack? Okay, you're going to hear that I'm in favor of granting this license, because the concerns were, and I've read every ordinance ad nauseam. You know, right in our ordinance, it clearly states, you do not put a liquor license in an isolated area. Right in the ordinance, it states that you don't do that. You put it in areas that are commercially developed in residential areas. It's, it's in our ordinance. I had four things that were on my to-do list from 925 Legacy LLC. One was sewage concerns. Two was the water certification. Three, site plan approval. Four, attorney's fees paid. All of those conditions have been met. Number five, Oakland County will not issue a C of O for that bar or restaurant until all of those conditions are met. They've met, the only thing they haven't met is connecting to the sewer. Christian has offered up to say he's getting this license, it's being prepared, so the arduous task of getting the license through all these inspections with the Michigan Liquor Control Commission, so that when everything is done, the sewer connection is made, the Oakland County Health Department issues us a C of O, he can begin operating. Rather than wait for that, this is just a process he's going through. He's also made the offer of not doing the outside dining until this township approves and it's done. What goes on inside is regulated by more than just the feelings of the township. The Oakland County Sheriff's Department, the Michigan Liquor Control Commission, we have ordinance and building inspectors in there all the time, plus their own requirements through like the tip certification and things like that. They can lose their license, they can lose their business. They can, they can be fined severely and, and restricted in business should they violate any of those acts. So, I'm in favor of granting this liquor license at this time.
Like Jack, I read these ordinances and codes from cover to cover, and there are so many controls built in by Liquor Control Board that made me dizzy reading it.
Yep.
I had the same concerns, the sewer, the water, all the issues that we talked about, approval of the site plan, all those things have been answered. I do have concern when it comes to security for the building, if there's children in there, if you're going to have a uniformed police officer in there at any point and is recognizing as a police source, that would be my concern. Other than that, I have no intentions of running your business. You know how to do it. And I don't think we ought to get in that business, uprunning his business. That's my opinion.
My only concern is, our attorney says that this operational plan has got a couple of flaws. I don't have any problem delaying this for one month. Again, I'm in favor of it, but I have to listen to my attorney, that he says we should put it off and get a rock solid plan. And if he says there's holes in it, I don't know where the holes are, I'm not going to go against that. Again, I'm in favor of this.
I'll make a motion to postpone the new Class C liquor license request for 925 Will Pure Legacy Entertainment. An acceptable operating agreement is devised by the township attorney at the expense of 925 Will Pure Legacy Entertainment LLC. Board members ought to forward their comments on what should or should not be included in the operating agreement. Supervisor Don, Treasurer Ferrari, Clerk Wright, have to review these comments and bring back the operating agreement to the township board for review and consideration.
No support, no motion.
I'll make a motion to grant a Class C liquor license to 925 Will Pure Legacy Entertainment LLC, address 925 North Address 925 North Will Pure Road, Suite 191, Oxford, Michigan 48371. Do you want me to read the agreement regarding the liquor license also? Is that required?
Because I'm sure of that.
Second.
Move to the second. Any other comments?
Can I make a comment?
Come on up. Do you want to comment?
Yeah, if my... Please. Would it be acceptable if I just lean right here? Would that be okay?
I will give you an exception.
Okay.
Talk loud.
I can do that. I would like to point out that I may not have been clear on some of the areas that we're concerned about. We're just not talking about the condos that are on Dougal's Lake. We're talking about also the condos across from Dougal's Lake. Where I live, where you clearly see and hear things that are going on in the Legacy Center. I would like the board to know that I taught and coached for 30 years. I'm all for many, many of the things Mr. Mills wants to put in there and has put in there. It's great for kids. Our concern is serving liquor behind the building that is much closer than it appears to where we live. And you can look out of your window and I hear loud talking more than I hear traffic. It is very, very visible, it's very, very real to us. I have never heard anything from Boulder Point. I have never heard of any complaints. I think if you compare what Mr. Mills is doing, holding these different functions, great. But he's holding a lot of functions and comparing them to not very many functions that come out of the Boulder Point Center, okay? Also, I would like to point out that that letter is not official that supposedly supports the Legacy Center. And it's one reason why there's not a lot of us here. Many of us are older. Mr. Mills mentioned the word fear. We weren't informed of this. Our president, who wrote or sent this email, there was no information whatsoever over the last couple of years from our association to us. And I find it strange that that person writes in a manner that it looks like it represents us, where that person who is president apparently also could have posted information about what was going on and did not do that. But again, we're just concerned about serving booze outside behind the building and controlling that. Appreciate it very much.
I want to amend my motion to include, while the applicant is applying for outside permit at this time, no outside dining will be permitted until it is approved by the Oxford Township Board of Trustees for this function. Resupply. And while we were talking, I texted Lieutenant Patterson and Sergeant Lenz and Deputy Grant, and there have been zero complaints from the Legacy Center for any violations.
My final word is the attorney stressing that needs to be a solid operating agreement in place. Again, I'm for this liquor license. Curtis?
Yeah, looking through the board packet, there's several pages in there of concerns from our attorney, from Treasurer Ferrari, from Oakland County Health Department. For me personally, I've not seen a lot of those questions answered. I would need those answered before I can vote affirmative on this. And also, there's a few items on the application that are lacking of information that needs to be provided. As an example, a home tax statement, unpaid taxes. We have a summer one from before and a winter one. We have a signed lease agreement, for example. It's not signed. At least it's written in there, but it's not signed. So it doesn't show what Mr. Mills's ownership percentages, interest. So those are just a couple of my concerns. So for me, to get that vote, we need... Me, I need to have those questions answered and make a solid decision. Plus, as another issue is, from the previous application to now, there's a lot of changes that have occurred of the request. So for me, to put that out of my mind, what you wanted and almost had, to now, there's some things I think need to be discussed further.
I agree with Curtis.
Our winter taxes have been paid.
I'm not saying they haven't, but in the packet, it just shows a summer of 2017 tax schedule.
Just finding this out now?
When I submitted the packet, Curtis, it was in January, the taxes were not due yet. You held on to those packets for about six days.
Okay, all right. Same court, good.
It's the lease sign.
Curtis, he's given up 20.2 to about 19.5 for our fix we need to look at.
Well, can I... One last thing, if I may. You know, we're happy to maybe make it subject to a specific agreement, but you know, the delay of this another 30 days, it just kills our business. You know, because after you approve it, it has to go back to MLCC for another, you know, 90 days. You know, we've been stagnant, you know, for a number of reasons, but our, you know, our business not having these approvals and not being able to move forward is really, it's hurting our business, to be honest with you. So as far as the, some of the details like signing a lease or subject to a signed lease or subject to some of the, you know, the other requirements, you know, our alcohol permit to the MLCC hasn't changed. You know, what's changed really is that we've detailed it more in the application. We didn't... When we first did this application, we didn't realize that you were concerned about the permits, to be honest with you. You know, how we run the business inside the business, you know. So as we did this, and we did this in conjunction with the township, we didn't do it in a vacuum. But nothing has really changed on our side from the original application from the LLC, which is, was submitted in September of last year. To answer your question on security, we do have off-duty police from Lake Orion. From Lake Orion is part of our security team. So.
They're visible. They're visible.
They all carry their badges.
Uniforms?
No uniform. Part of their contract is that they carry their badges.
We're going to talk real... We're going to come up. Okay.
Yeah, they're... So I'm the Director of Operations.
Say your name. I want to get a word once that he's got a cane.
Yeah, my name's Nick Wallace. I'm the Director of Operations for Legacy 925. So we, I'm in charge of all the security, bar staff, bartenders, everything like that. So we use Lake Orion Police Department. They're all off-duty cops when they work any kind of security events for us. They carry their badges. They're not required to carry any firearms at that point in time. And if they want to carry firearms, most of them don't. They don't think it's a place for that, but they're in there, they have their badges.
Their badges don't mean a thing here. Once they leave that village, they're just like me.
Understandable.
I'd go show you a badge.
But a badge, and that's something that's recognized in the community. And that's, you know, when you see a badge, it's a little bit different than you see a guy that's got a security under shirt or a security under jacket. So we do employ them, so we do employ those.
I guess when I see a person in a police department, it gets my attention real quick.
I don't disagree. I just made the point that they have laws.
How fast were you going?
I'm going to... I wish there was a way we could do this subject to... You know, you guys have went out of your way putting up $100, basically $150,000 for your sewer, you've done a lot of work. But I hate to go against the attorney. I wish there was some way we could do a contingent upon getting some of the, you know, Curtis has showed me the exhibit for who owns what. It's got Christian Mills, who's that, Michael? And a question mark. We've got 33, 33, names, names, no name. And there's other parts of the stuff you've submitted that are lacking information. What I want to do is...
That's what Gary wants, is tightened up.
That's why the attorney says there's stuff... He represents other communities. He did commerce and he goes, "That thing was a real Chinese fire drill," because they didn't have a tight operating agreement. And so I wish there was some way we could do this contingent.
You do a contingent?
I don't know.
Having a operating agreement?
I wish we could follow the attorney's advice. Does anybody got any suggestions?
Motion on the floor.
Call roll.
We have two motions on the floor. I have to vote on the second one first.
Let's vote on the, what was the amendment helping?
Resupport.
That was adding the no outside dining until...
Until... Doesn't matter, Joe. We got a motion here. Everybody know the motion? Roll call.
Clerk to Curtis?
Yes.
Clerk to Payne?
Yes.
Treasurer Ferrari?
No.
Supervisor Dunn?
No.
Clerk to Wright? No. Clerk to Darb?
Yes.
And Clerk to Nichols?
Yes.
There are four yeses?
Four yeses.
You got it.
Oh, that's just the amendment.
Okay, that takes care of the amendment. There's another motion.
Oh, that's the one that's on the license, it's not?
No, this is the one to approve the license.
Okay, we'll try that. Roll call.
Clerk to Nichols?
Yes.
Clerk to Darb?
Yes.
Clerk to Payne?
Yes.
Clerk to Curtis?
Yes.
Supervisor Ferrari?
No.
Clerk to Wright? No. And Supervisor Dunn?
Don't matter. I'll go no.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Would I just like to make one comment?
You can.
I think this is going on forever. Businessman, being in business for 38 years myself, I couldn't imagine all the hoops that he's had to jump through in order to make this work. But we did it because of the community, that's best for them. And I want you to know that's why I voted this.
I appreciate that.
And you know what? There was a gentleman mentioned about other places, you know, they had to come before us for liquor license. They'd do the same thing. Maybe not to this extent, but there's not too many multi-million dollar facilities here. You've got, you know, a small building and it's a little bit easier, but still they had to go through the hoops. So we're just doing what we can to protect the township.
I'd like to make a comment.
Yes.
I really appreciated the presentation. I thought that was very nicely done, explained a lot, answered a lot of questions. I just really thought it was a great presentation, so I just want to add that.
Okay, we're going to move on. Let's move on to Mickelson's Shores Wellsite.
You guys are welcome to come in.
I move to award the Mickelson Shores Wellsite project improvements to Trojan Development Company at a base bid of $654,000, 37210. The $654,000, 37210 amount to the expense of the water fund, number 591, 538, 972, 005, water supply wells.
Second.
Move to the second. Any questions?
Let's look at beer.
Roll call. Clerk to Wright?
Yes.
Supervisor Dunn?
Yes.
Treasurer Ferrari?
Yes.
Clerk to Payne?
Yes.
Clerk to Nichols?
Yes.
And Clerk to Darb?
Yes.
Online sewer payments, Treasurer Ferrari?
I'll make a motion, the Oxford Township Board of Trustees authorizes Joseph Chief Ferrari to implement automatic bill payment, township sewer bills to Flagstar Bank, utilizing the monthly bank fee option with interest, so that all regulars and expenditures will come into, excuse me, go into or come out of the sewer fund.
Second.
Move to the second. Clerk to Wright?
Yes, we, preferably in this motion, you know, I add when this will begin.
Oh, it's understood as soon as we get it up. That's a moving target.
All right, and then there's a requirement for administrator of the fund.
That's already done through our resolutions.
Will we deal with the bags?
Yeah.
All right, well, just so the board's aware, the plan is to roll this out on a trial basis with myself and Deputy...
Yeah, I'm trying to. Receive it, Curtis.
Deputy Treasurer Dobrel, that'll be on the July files and then hopefully in October it'll be a full-on process.
See how we can pull it all up.
I don't think you have time to do it for April.
Okay. And it's a moving target.
Okay, all in favor, was there one? Kind of falling asleep here. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
opposed? Motion carries. Michigan International Trade Network Agreement. Curtis?
Yes, this is actually the Michigan Intergovernmental Trade Network on my behalf. But what this does is allows the township to go out for broader, broader spread from prospective bidders for projects. And according to the person who gave me the information, Jennifer, her last name, indicated the full cost for the township to join. However, there will be a $195 fee for doing the, like, the walk of letter and informing the prospective bidders out there that actually township's not a part of that. And you'll see down there in section 3.1 of the agreement, you know, mailing fees, which do not apply, but the press release fees will... What will happen is the company will send out this letter, the charter town sponsor joins the end purchasing group. I'm talking with Jennifer, she just inserted my name as part of this, I don't saw the board wants to put Supervisor Dunn in there, Treasurer Ferrari, our service committee, Clerk to Curtis, at this manner, it's a pleasure on that. And also, this will be what the vendors will get from me to actually know that I should talk.
We should get some more bids made instead of having our engineer go and solicit with you.
And that's thanks to Engineer Sharp for getting this process rolling on our behalf. Unfortunately, he's considered a vendor, he cannot be part of the program. So once this is approved, we're just going to fill out the CMA department and then there has to be main contact information. So that's why it's important to know who's going to be the point person on bids.
I move to approve the agreement for services between the Charter Township Oxford and International Database Corp., doing business under the Trade and Aid Bidnet. As president, authorized Supervisor William Dunn to sign the agreement on behalf of the Charter Township of Oxford.
Second.
Move to the second. Curtis?
Do you want the clerk to know about them, the...
To sign the agreement? What's ever in the agreement?
Want to sign it, put his fires on, on the...
Yep, whatever's in there is in there.
No, as far as notifying the vendors. That's fine. Okay, mark it. Just make sure.
If I had any changes with you, I'd go to chat. I'm good.
Everybody clear?
Yes.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
opposed? Motion carries. And that's the end of it. Go relocation of voting precinct 6.
The board members, this came about thanks to efforts of Deputy Clerk McCullough and the administrative assistant, went there to explore moving precinct 6, which is now located at the library over to the Parks and Rec Community Center Room. The Parks and Rec have to read what has happened, just so people know in the audience and on television. The current location is in the village of the library, existing precinct 6, now it's going to be moved over to here for approvals. It fits right into precinct 6's jurisdiction, and most people do maybe turn out more bulk. This will work out well, so that'll make a motion to, a move to designate the Parks and Recreation Community Room located at 2795 St. Light Road as the precinct 6's polling location for the August 7, 2018 primary election. primary election, and social protest elections for the Charter Township of Oxford.
Support.
Move and support it. Any questions? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Let's move on to, there's public comment. Any public comment?
I was gonna say a lot more tonight, but you guys made it really easy. I did just want to update everybody about the Wood Trail collapse. Just, I don't know what everybody's been hearing out there.
Ever.
But we've got some emails from the Road Commission right now. We had to go out there and do some emergency repairs, like Jack was saying earlier, we're going to track our invoices, and additionally, the WRC's had to do some work as well, and so they're going to kind of keep track of that. We wanted to get the, get the repair complete first, and then, I guess we'll figure out later on the monies and submit the information to the Road Commission and see how they react to that. But everybody's going to try to get reimbursed for it. But just so that everybody's aware, Wood Trail is going to be closed probably until at least mid-May, is the date that we're getting right now, so about another 60 days to come to meet the design of the project. They hope to bid it in probably early April, get a contractor on board, and, and then probably take about 30 days at least to complete the project, so. Just want to give everybody an update, I didn't know who was in the loop on everything there, but it was a pretty big issue, and everything seems to have been resolved now. They do have the drainage flowing back through there again, so the.
It's flowing good now.
It's flowing very well through there. There's been some, some design work just been, just wanted to update you guys on that. That was all. Yes.
Is there some disruption to the polyand trail as well?
They had to have, the polyand trail was closed down because they had seven large pumps out there that were pumping down the water. This area that we're talking about, it's probably 10 acres in size, and the water was 20 feet deep.
Is there any damage to the trail?
Um, I haven't seen it because they just pulled the pumps off there today, so we haven't looked at that. I know Linda Moran's been out there quite a bit patrolling it, and she's been in on the emails, so she knows what's going on out there. They may have to come back in and spruce it up a little bit. Overall, it wasn't damaged too badly because of the type of material that was there. It's a crush, you know, a crushed limestone.
If it is a problem, then they would come in and take care of it?
Yeah, yeah, and I'm sure that the Road Commission's gonna try to restore whatever has been disrupted out there. Thank you.
Any other public comment? Board comment, starting with Jack?
Captain, up to date a little more on that Wood Trail event. It's monumental, I mean, it's huge. And we've had some citizens concerned, we've met with them. There's nothing but great people out there, from the Road Commission, from the De Angelos, from the Water Resources Committee. It's, it's a monstrous program, and they're all working real hard. Secondly, I sent an email to all of the township officials, village, EDA, fire chief, police, to get your contracts. There's Anne Marie Rojo's from Tough Mudder that's coming to town March 27th and 28th to meet with you all individually or as a group, to set up TNA accounts, any bonds required, permits, that kind of stuff. So she is the contact. In that email, it's included her phone number. Other than that, thank you.
Margie?
I want to confirm the joint meeting for March 22nd at 6:00 PM for the planning mission, the ZBA, and the Township Board. I'm not sure that the ZBA members have been notified because Monday at our meeting, several people did not, were not sure of the date, so I just would like to have that.
That's going to be 6:00 PM instead of 7:00?
Yes, that's what I just said, yeah.
Read the, read the master plan.
I don't have, oh, we need to read the master plan, be prepared, but we have to actually have it in our hands.
The meeting is involving regarding the master plan, whether this board allows it to go out to other communities for review and approval of it. So if you don't have a copy of it, Deanna can get you a copy of it, and I would suspect that she can get it electronically.
That was Margie talking.
Yeah. Change your voice.
I love do-overs. But. I'll, what Margie said, on that same date, I've got a meeting with SNCOG, being the township rep. If it could be pushed back, that back to 7, I'd love to have that. I like to go to the SNCOG meeting because it's like one of the main ones for us to go to. So I'm kind of torn on how to handle that. I know we've got this, the board meeting, but that SNCOG meeting would be important as well, as I think over on the east side, over at McCullough County somewhere, at the college, except for McCullough College. So I'm gonna try to make both. Also, too, I'd like to thank my staff, especially Tracy Dever, my deputy, for coming up that forum for online payments. Like, that was a good idea, they should do a good job of that. The sinkhole, just to let you guys know, the county's looking at us to fund a half of it, so nobody's going to be surprised at that. They, by law, they can only fund 50%. They're coming back to us for the other 50, just so everybody knows, I'm telling you right now, so it's not going to be a shocker when you get a bill for that, because they're going to want somebody to pay that, just so you know. I talked to Tom, and he said, we can only pay 50% by law. I said, I'm gonna let my board know, let them do as they will. So when they, we, let's say the bill's 250 grand, they can only pay half of that. Somebody's got to pay the rest.
It'll be a lot more than that.
Yeah, whatever that is. And also, too, I agree with Bill and Curtis on the legacy issue. I really think we should have had a tightened up operating agreement. I'm hoping in the future this doesn't come back to haunt us, like things like the open seating. If you take a look at that whole concept, even though we put this in, that we conditionally approved it, that this liquor commission doesn't have to consider that. So I'm just hoping that, I was jumping the gun on it, that we end up approving, that's be exactly what actually happens up there. I don't want to be, I don't, this come back to bite us. That's all I am.
Mr. Wright?
Yes, it's been, it's been brought up regarding the 2020 census. So if you look on the screen here, this is the census website. If you go here and research, and put in 2020 census jobs, it'll take you to another link hopefully, and then you scroll down to field jobs by state. Click on that, select a geography, you'll select Michigan. And employment opportunities, and then it shows you the field representatives issued date was January 1st, closing dates at the beginning of the year, December 31st, and there's two ranges. I don't know what those mean, but that's the, if you want to be a census taker for the census, that's the information, or maybe that's something, actually, maybe you can raise your hand if someone's interested in doing the census collecting. Also, I'd like to echo Treasurer Ferrari's sentiments on Deputy Treasurer Dovril's efforts on online repayment documents. That was well done. Also, my assistant, Richter, is out of the office until Monday, so putting the packets together for the joint meeting. If we have involvement with that, there may be a delay in getting those out. I'll see what I can do to work on those, to get those out maybe earlier, but as of right now, she's my right-hand person to make that happen. And last of all, just want to say my condolences to Jeff Kineas from the Township Park and Rock Department. His father did pass away this week, this week.
Patty?
I just want to mention that there's an evaluation, Oxford's EDA Main Street, put on by Downtown Development Authority, going to be all-day session tomorrow from 8:30 to 5:30. I'll be there, involving state officials as well as village manager and those people that are movers and shakers here in the village.
Should Supervisor be there, too?
I don't, he was invited, he's not all of them. That's all I have.
I should delegate some of this stuff.
Yes, you should.
Any other comment? I don't have anymore.
I'll make a motion, we adjourn.
Move?
Second.
Second it. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed? Motion carries.